The meeting to order. Pastor Winn?
Yes.
Would you?
Will do. Let us pray. Father, what a beautiful day you've given us here to live in southwest Florida. We ask God your blessings on our meeting today. We ask that you give us the wisdom and understanding, and we're grateful that we're able to serve this beautiful community, this city called Benita, in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the highest court. With the clerk call the roll, please.
Robert and Serpy?
Here.
Barbara Cregg?
Here.
Russ Winn?
Here.
Chairman Kurlender?
Here.
Richard Donlin?
Here.
Roger Brunswick?
Here.
James Worster?
Here.
With that, do I have a motion or otherwise to approve the minutes?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Robert Cregg?
Here.
Russ Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Kurlender?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Roger Donlin?
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
Yes.
Robert and Serpy?
Yes.
Just the point of concern, do we need a roll call for approval of the minutes?
No.
Okay.
Can't hurt, just in case any of you are trying to sneak out on the job.
Just a voice vote is sufficient, right?
Yep, correct.
It's at that time in the meeting for public comment for anybody who is not going to be sworn as a witness. Come forward. Hearing none, we'll proceed with the first case.
Chairman, I'm sorry.
Prior to that, there's an application for a continuance of the second case.
Correct.
Who is asking for the continuance?
The applicant is asking for the continuance.
Okay, so if passed is anything like prologue, if passed is prologue, then we generally don't give, you know, untimed continuances. So is there a date, Mr. Dolman?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
It does say thirty. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, it's been continuance until your next meeting.
Okay, fine. So with that, we'll proceed with the...
Larry, could I ask a question here?
Yes, please.
On this application, it's, all the diagrams and things are just on eight and a half by eleven pages, which makes them absolutely impossible to read. Could you make sure upon its release, middle or before the next hearing, that we get all the exhibitions at the size that our rules require?
Let me see what I can take care of.
I did get in my packet, a fair amount of...
Yeah, but that all goes with the first case.
No?
No.
Goes with the second case. At least mine did, what I had went with the second case.
I mean, it goes with the one about the variance of the distances. Oh, okay.
But the current case, it's absolutely illegible. I mean, I don't, you know, I can't say...
Then maybe it's backwards, I remember. And the other tiny little thing is when you give us a packet that has two cases in it, could you start the second case on a new page, though it's not on the back of the first one? It's a very silly request, but it will make my life a lot easier. Thank you.
You don't have anything else to add?
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so we've called the case. Is the applicant going to present anything, or? Please.
I'll go ahead and swear.
Good morning, my name is Wendy Miller.
Mrs. Miller, before you start, I'm going to go ahead and swear in all witnesses. Anyone intending to give testimony on this matter, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Trust me.
Good morning, my name is Wendy Miller. I am a representative from Cobblebanker. I had a hand in most of the transactional documents with regard to the sale of this property, which is how the setback violation was discovered during the attorney's due diligence. So through a lot of help with your city representatives, we determined that the setback violation has been a cause of erosion, not through any fault of the homeowner or builder. So I was able to obtain an estimate from Nelson Marine, which I did bring a copy of today, for setback erosion mitigation, if you will. They're going to reinforce and put more riprap in to help stop that erosion. So I don't know if I'm allowed to give you a copy of this, if it can be passed around.
You can, but then you'll lose it.
Well, that's okay, I have many more, so. And the former homeowners are here, they were able to come to an agreement with the new owner that we would move forward and try to obtain a variance so that in the future, if the new owners have to sell or are required to sell for any reason, that they don't have to go through the same process with their buyer. Do you have any questions?
So, has the property been transferred?
It has.
Anybody have anything?
Nobody from the zoning board wants to say anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else from the applicant? Hearing none, I'd ask the city to, the community development to proceed.
Good morning, Mary Zizo, Community Development. Before we begin our staff presentation, we did receive a letter with a few concerns and questions, so we would like to address those first, if possible, about this case, which is variance 18-56147-BOS. Mr. Sweet?
Good morning, for the record, Jay Sweet, City Surveyor and Planner, Community Development. We received a two-page letter. Mr. Worster had several comments about this process and what was going on here, and I wanted to sort of clarify several things, and I'm not going to go point by point, I can if we so desire, but here's the basis of what has happened here. First off, the property was built before the city was incorporated. The survey that was given to Lee County for that construction showed that it met the 25-foot setback from the mean high water. Since then, it has been surveyed, the house was built, we'll fast-forward 20-odd years, and all of a sudden, it's being sold again, and it appears it's been erosion. Under the law, if the erosion, if it's erosion or accretion and it's a navigable water, the boundary changes. So if you lose, you lose, if you gain, you gain. It happens over a slow period of time. This was not an avulsion. An avulsion is like a big storm event, where you can go back and you can claim, you can make an application to reclaim property that has been lost through avulsion. That is not the case we have here. So what we have is something where, over a period of time, for whatever reasons, and we can opine on that, but they're really sort of irrelevant, the property line has changed, and so it has resulted in what you would normally consider as a legal non-conforming situation. In other words, they didn't do anything illegal to create this, nature took its course, it exists, it existed legally at the time it was constructed, it is now non-conforming, so we have a legal non-conforming situation. In the opinion of staff, there's really no reason for this. On the other hand, you have title companies, and you have title attorneys, and they put an exception on the title policy. Now, one of the many exceptions you'll see in every standard title policy is an exception that says, "We don't ensure anything that a survey would show." So they get a survey, the survey shows that there's a violation of the setback. The house exists, no one's asked them to tear it down, they're not required to move it. The thing is, should they decide to bulldoze the house, they would have to meet the setbacks as they exist at the time they get a new permit. The staff recommendation does not vary from that. If for whatever purpose they feel they need this variance so that they're comfortable in their transaction, they're comfortable with their ownership, they're comfortable with their ability to sell it, it's sort of a, it's a nothing. But if it checks certain boxes, there's nothing that staff has a problem with. So there's what this really boils down to, it's sort of simple. Without going through Mary's presentation, they originally wanted to do an administrative, way beyond staff's ability for administrative, variance, it would need to go this route. They made the petition, we have a duty to process that petition, I give them the opportunity to make their case. As long as the conditions are such, I don't see that this is a big issue one way or the other, but the problem is, that property is now owned by the state, they would have to acquire the property from the state to reclaim it. There's already mangroves growing, there's other things that show that happened over a long period of time. If it was an avulsion like from Irma, you wouldn't have old growth mangroves already there. If it happened over a 20-year period, you would. And so, you know, there's where we can make certain qualitative judgments. But there's, that, I could get more specific, but I think that sort of covers the nutshell of the questions.
So, your testimony is in response to a letter you received from a zoning board member?
Correct.
Mr. Rooney, should that letter be shared with the zoning board, or would it be appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, I brought copies of that letter that I'd like to distribute at this time to the members.
Thank you.
Sure.
If I may, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I won't bother to read this in for the record, but I disagree, and I have some questions about this.
Thanks, Mr. Rooney.
The basis of my notes was, is, the setback that was originally required has been compromised by time. That setback was there for a purpose, to protect the house from a catastrophic storm, as may occur. It's, I appreciate it was an arbitrary number, but it was the rule, and probably still is the rule of the day, from what I understand, from what was submitted.
I think this is point I have.
With the safety feature of that original setback being compromised, would not the city be open for liable if they would approve a variance to minimize that originally required setback? Would they not be liable in being, in favor of reducing the safety?
That question is more appropriately addressed to our council, I would think.
I totally agree, and I'm glad you're here.
My general thought is, there is very little liability ever that attaches to a local government from its zoning and building functions. There are numerous exceptions within statutory law to protect the government, to allow them to enact legislative policies, in particular in land use and in building, including setbacks, building inspections, things like that, that could not happen if they were tied to the potential of tort liability. So as a general statement, local governments are, besides their power, their sovereign immunity, they are exempt from most tort claims for liability on those decisions, particularly when they are determined at a quasi-legislative level, like this is a policy discretion. The issue, I think, here is, this is, this home was constructed prior to any setbacks. The setbacks that were imposed later on were imposed in a variety of circumstances and for a variety of rationales. I'm not even certain whether or not the particular setback that would apply was restricted to canal communities or canal, communities based near water versus just rear yard setbacks in general. That would be a question I might have for staff, but, no, I generally don't, I don't, wouldn't think that there is. I think the biggest concern here, that the, both the applicant would have and the city would have, is that, notwithstanding the possibility that Mr. Sweet addressed where they, where they tear down the house, the issue really is, you have a non-conforming structure probably, because it's, the home itself is very old. No modifications to that home, which expanded or enlarged in any way, can occur as long as it's in violation of the setback. Now, the violation of setbacks might no, no cause of the applicant, but they would be restricted from ever making an expansion in any other direction away from the setback. So if they were to add on to a garage, or add on to, you know, a floor room or something like that, they would be restricted from that, absent this variance. And I don't think that any of those changes would impact the safety of the building.
Let me ask a question. When was the house built?
1999.
Okay. The survey that was presented dated November 99, I forget the date off the top of my head, but it's in my letter, shows the 25-foot setback, and it outlines an area that, if you build within that area, I think it's on page 26 of the packet, and...
26.
Hold on a minute.
Always places.
Page 25, and it's in Exhibit A.
It's over here. It's not any clearer.
No, it is page 26, where the survey shows...
Yes. You got that.
All right.
May I inquire of you?
Sure.
So are you suggesting that a property owner who buys a property in good faith and conforms with all the laws then existing, and through no fault of their own goes through some act of God, if you will, over a period of time, that they be precluded by us from selling their property?
No.
Because they're in violation of the...
No violation.
That's correct, but I want to hear his point of view, though.
No, no, obviously, an owner does have a right to sell the property.
But if it's selling the property requires a variance from us to change what the safety issue that is, was originally required, if they, if we change that, that seems wrong with, when he had, really has an ability to protect and rebuild that and restore it. No question, it's a problem permitting it. And I'm concerned, let's just, let me pull out the example I highlighted in my note. Two years ago, Irma was coming north from Naples, and there's storm surges of 12, 10 to 12 feet, predicted, possible on the barrier island. As the storm came north, it deviated, and fortunately, that never happened. But a 10- or 12-foot storm surge would have dramatically affected that, both sides of that island. And there would, what's there today would be less effective than if the other eight or 10 feet on both sides were in place as a safety feature. That was, that's my argument. So, so, if they can replace that, they should replace it, and not ask for a variance.
You mean like rebuilding the wall?
Refilling.
Rebuilding the embankment, the wall, the wall's the other side of the track, and was not affected.
I thought they said, the presentation from Jay was that they couldn't do that, that...
They have mangroves surrounding the property, and you cannot move those.
Do you have a picture? Is there like a picture of the actual seated property?
Well, she's doing that. Could I ask a question? What is the exception on the title insurance that is occasioning this request? I mean, is the insurance saying that it won't pay for the house because it's non-conforming?
Well, I suspect, I don't even, I don't think I even had to look at it. The general exception of land use zoning and ordinances that would be applicable in this situation, that the title insurance is not going to make any representations with respect to title, that it's affected by a zoning ordinance. In this situation, the issue is that the house could not either be reconstructed, enlarged, or possibly built to the same dimensions.
Or destroyed.
And so there, that becomes, that becomes an effective bar against anyone purchasing the property, at least mortgaging anything.
This is precisely the reason why you would buy title insurance. And then when you go to buy it, the title insurance says, "Well, we'll insure you, but not for this."
But, but, but.
Why am I buying title insurance?
Right. At that point, they're just saying, yes, you own the land. There's no, there's no, there's no other, there's no title defects, but they're not going to insure against anything else.
Is it a problem, and we have someone from the bank, is it a problem in getting a mortgage if the title insurance has this kind of exception?
Oh, yes, because, you know, even though waterfront, the property, waterfront value is pretty high, and the land itself, also you're insuring the structure.
No, no.
And what you're essentially saying is that structure cannot be rebuilt or modified in any meaningful way because it's non-conforming as a result of the setback issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I pulled up on the map, Ariel, the site, and I've...
Describe to me where the site is.
Sure, so it's off of Carroll Court, which is off of McLaughlin, off of Hickory.
Right, oh, it's on Hickory. So is it...
The backside.
The backside.
It's the backside of Astero Bay?
There you go.
So you're saying that white there, is there, there's, that's, that's the land that's eroding right now, that's going up against that white piece there?
That is the river.
That's the river?
It's riprap. Maybe you could point to where...
Riprap, I'm like, there's no river there. There's riprap along the way, but that has gone away a bit, and so they're offering to handplace it with a new company.
Can we point it out on this photo where we're talking about? It's not...
I don't think they're trying to reconfigure it. I think they're trying to repair what's there.
Yeah.
And...
And the south, south...
What's the problem? They're going to try to repair it at their cost. I don't understand this.
Would it be...
I don't get this.
Before any motions get made on this, perhaps we can let Ms. Zizo go through her...
I should have her presentation.
Maybe we could get it from the beginning, and then we'd have a better understanding.
We just have widely divergent views here.
Okay, so Mary Zizo, Community Development. This is a request to grant an 8.54, 8.54-foot reduction for a water body setback along the eastern portion, and a 4.2-foot reduction along the southern portion of the property for the existing single-family home, which does not meet our water body setbacks of 25 feet. So if you can see, it's along the eastern side of Hickory.
Don't we have a pointer?
Is this a pointer? Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, the home is located at 5951 Carroll Court. It's zoned RS1, which is our typical single-family zoning, and the current structure was built in 1999 under Lee County. The site plan that they submitted shows when it was built, that it was supposed to be meeting the 25-foot water body setbacks along each end. It's surrounded by water on three sides. This setback is measured from the mean high water line, and as you can see, they're, on the eastern portion, they're only at 16.46 feet, and then 20.8 feet on the southern portion, right here. So this shows that when it was built, it was supposed to be meeting those setbacks. This was their original site plan.
Could you just point to the water?
The water would be over here.
No, the other end.
In here.
There's the water, okay, no wonder I was confused.
There's a canal back here, and here's a bay. And here's more water.
So show me the eastern and sides that they want the setback changes on.
So there's this side that you need it on, and this side.
Okay.
Which I believe is shown right here, what their current survey shows. So 16.46 feet here, and then 20.8 feet was here.
It's one decision. Here.
So the approval criteria for a variance, as I'm sure many of you know, there are exceptional or extraordinary conditions or circumstances that are inherent to the property in question. This property is surrounded by water on three sides. The exceptional or extraordinary conditions or circumstances are not the result or actions of the applicant, and they were not taken subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance. So these rules were in effect at the time the house was built, and they were abiding by that when they built the house. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will relieve the applicant, we're not providing them an opportunity to expand their house at this time. The granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood, it's an existing home, the neighbors will not be affected by this variance, and that this specific piece of property, or the intended use of the property, will not be of a general or recurrent nature. Much of the erosion has already occurred, we hope that it will not continue at the same rate, however, they are willing to put in more protection in the event that it does happen. So based on that, our staff conclusion is that we do recommend approval, we acknowledge that the site is already developed, these are extraordinary circumstances for this specific piece of property, and that the applicants did not create this hardship on their own, in fact, they were abiding by all of the requirements at the time the house was built.
Well, one could argue on the other side of this, could they not? That having purchased the property, you see what's going on, and you see that there's boat traffic, and so on, and that there's moving water, and moving water causes erosion, and therefore, why not put riprap or a seawall up when you bought the property? Could not one say, "Hey, look, isn't there a responsibility to preserve the property?"
Absolutely. You're correct about that. A seawall is not permitted along that way, but you're right, hand-dropped riprap is permitted there and could be recommended as a point of this approval. It is a valid concern. This could be a request from the current homeowner, it could be a request from the future homeowner, but they would still be in the same situation from where the house is currently sitting.
So, question for counsel. Could we, should this board decide to approve this, could they attach a condition saying that they must put the riprap in?
I think you got, you had a couple of concerns. One, you were, I think then the condition's already covered, this is for the existing house only, you know, it's not a, it's not a variance that runs through all time, so if this house is demolished and a new house is built, it doesn't necessarily get to build up closer. You have the interest of the property owner themselves in protecting the property from further erosion. I would be, I would be careful in putting too many conditions relating to armoring, only because that does require additional environmental permitting that, that is very site-specific, and so we can, we say with pretty good confidence that they can, they can place some additional riprap by hand now, that applicant has already indicated that they intend to do so. So perhaps, a condition that says to add additional riprap to the extent, you know, permissible or something like that, some kind of qualified condition, I think, would be appropriate. But you'd want to be careful about saying you have to do this in order to keep this variance, and then, because of the mangroves or other site conditions, they're just not going to get the approvals to do it.
I disagree with that, Counsel. In my opinion, they have a right to build out, to do away with the additional, do away with the request, and build out at the 20-foot line, and protect that. Build it back to what it was originally, and protect their 25... and, and protect their, their 25, full 25-foot distance. Now, I appreciate there's permitting required to do that, that is obviously because it's on navigable water, it's going to be I don't want to say problematic, but it's going to be systematic, and you'll have to comply with their requirements. And they, they do that all the time to allow people to redo what's been washed away. And it's just a matter of going through the permitting process. So a condition that would require that for approval is what I'm asking for.
I think, I think from what I understand from reviewing the application is the, the property was already previously armored to a degree with riprap. So, and that riprap didn't wash away. It just simply was insufficient to prevent the erosion. So unless we're talking about, you know, full Army Corps treatment and removing the riprap and the mangroves and putting seawall in, which the city has indicated is not permitted in the area, we're only talking about placing additional riprap in the hope that that, that is sufficient. So we're not talking about necessarily rebuilding because what was already there was insufficient to stop it.
Well, it wasn't sufficient.
That's my point. It was not sufficient.
Oh, it's not, okay.
So we're not talking about a build-back scenario because there is not, it's not, it's not a, the armoring that was in place was insufficient. We're talking about asking for additional armor, armoring, and so there's, there's probably some permitting limitations on that. But I suspect that the owner has every interest in trying to protect their property, that they're going to move forward anyway.
Can I ask a question about this? Or may I ask a question? Erosion is kind of a reality, and it's unlikely to not continue. So if we give a relief to this, and say you, you can have four feet extra or relief on one side and eight on the other, and two or three years from now, the boundaries are even more close, so they only have, say, they need another four feet or another eight feet. You can't keep going on doing this forever. It sounds to me what we're being asked to do is a Band-Aid. And what I'm not clear about, and this is what confuses me, is since the property sold and they got a mortgage on it, it doesn't sound to me as if this issue was an impediment to selling the house or getting a mortgage. The title insurance on, is a question that I don't totally understand. I mean, the, I don't think the title is a problem here particularly. So I guess the bigger question, do they have trouble getting insurance to insure their property against damage because of this setback requirement? If they can even get insurance in this kind of a situation today, which is a huge question. But so I don't, I guess maybe, I don't see that, unless you can explain it to me. I don't see what the need at the moment is to protect their interests. And I see that, it seems to me that just looking at reality, this is not a going to be anything other than something that's going to continue to happen. Erosion seems to be the name of the game now, and I don't think it's going to slow down particularly. So what on earth do we accomplish if we give them four feet and eight feet, and two years from now, they need another two feet or another three feet? Does it just keep on going? And so I need to know what, what is the compelling need of some sort to get this variance, since it doesn't at the moment seem to be a problem to them? Maybe the next sale is when it's a problem and you need to come deal with it. I don't know.
Well, I think.
I just don't, I don't see what that is.
So I think the, and I know I'm speaking a little bit for the applicant on this situation, but the, the issue of the erosion is not what's being, trying to be addressed here with the variance. The applicant is seeking a variance to clear up title issues and the nonconforming issues so that their house, they will not have any issues expanding or doing any other permitting. Now, they're not going to be allowed to expand towards the water in any way that would further endanger the property, but effectively, the property is tagged as a nonconforming structure at this point because of the fact of the variance. Now, if you grant the variance to the, to the dimensions that are set forth and erosion continues, that variance is basically useless because the property then again becomes nonconforming. So I don't think the situation is that the applicant is, is resigned to the fact that there's going to be erosion and that they're just going to continue to ask for variances. I don't think that's what's being asked for. I think they're trying to deal with an issue that came up recently in the sale that they became aware of. They're trying to maintain their property as conforming. It probably has benefits to the insurance, although I'm not positive for homeowners' insurance. But they're going to have a conforming structure that'll issue, that'll clear up any title issues. And then separately, they have indicated that they are going to place additional riprap in to help with the erosion issue. So I think that they're trying to deal with the two issues on different treads, and we're sort of combining them back again. I think the real, the real issue is, is the erosion a hardship under our standards for, for granting of a variance? I mean, that's really where.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. What is, what is the hardship? And I, I'm not quite sure that I understand what it is.
Well, I mean, if, going to the questions, I know some of the other board members mentioned, you know, does, does the city view things like hurricanes and acts of gods and things that are well outside the control of the applicant as hardships? If they're not, I don't know what you would qualify as a hardship. Maybe the applicant, the owners can, can speak a little bit of what their plans to do about the erosion, but the other issue.
First of all, we.
We still haven't got to staff.
There's no evidence in the case that if you do riprap appropriately, erosion's going to continue. I would argue to the contrary, that if done properly, it would stop erosion. What it would not stop is further erosion due to a major storm. That, that, nothing will, will prevent, but it certainly, it certainly stops it. It stops the erosion. That's the whole purpose of it, is not to simply mitigate, but to stop it. And if done properly, it does stop it. But again, there's nothing in the record to support that either, other than me saying it, so.
I came up to corroborate some of his statements. The new owners do have plans for remodeling, not necessarily expansion. So in the future, there will be permits being pulled, and this is going to come up. The purchase did not involve a mortgage. It was a cash purchase. Had it, this, this transaction would not have been able to occur because they would not have been able to get a mortgage. So the current owner's concern is that along the line, they may want to sell again. If their buyer needs a mortgage, and this isn't granted, their buyer will not be able to purchase the property because they will not be able to get the mortgage. Now, in this area, there's a 50% chance that it'll be another cash buyer, so they may not have to deal with it. They're conservative folks. They want to, you know, follow the rules, do things the way they're supposed to, so they want to get the variance so that in the event that they do want to sell down the line, they are able to, to a buyer who needs a mortgage. There is a very real possibility, because of the location, that the erosion could continue. They're willing to do the seawall, not the seawall, I'm sorry, the riprap putback, if you will, that I brought in with me to try to help mitigate that or stop it. The current, the former owner was unaware that there was any erosion. There was no indication on the property, any loss, any damage that would have led them to believe that something was going on. They had no idea that the property had shrunk, you know, basically. So the, the new owner doesn't want that to continue either, so they're going to go ahead with the proposal and have the work done. To your statement earlier, it, because of the mangroves, and I know this from experience on other transactions, the DEP is not in favor of disturbing mangroves. So the likelihood of them approving a permit to remove those mangroves in order to build back the eroded earth is slim.
I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
Could I ask you, if, if this variance is requested, then is approved, then the lot becomes smaller?
Correct.
Does it then, is it then a nonconforming lot?
I believe as Mr. Sweet indicated earlier, if we hadn't applied for the variance, it would have just naturally evolved into a legal nonconforming situation because of the erosion. Correct me if I'm wrong. So if attorneys hadn't been involved, we wouldn't be here. If a title company was the one who handled it, sorry, they would have just, you know, gone along their normal process, noticed the nonconforming situation of the lot because of the setback changes, and they would have just closed, and everyone would have gone on their merry way.
So it's nonconforming just because of setbacks? It's not, not conforming because of lot size?
It's, well, that, that's a little bit more legal than.
Well, that's an issue, isn't it?
No, it meets the minimum lot size requirements on RS1 lot.
What?
So RS1 lot requires that they have 7,500 square feet. And so they have 7,500 square feet of land. It, it was a big lot to begin with. When you look at the original survey, the question always is, since the previous owner says they never noticed the erosion, was, you know, that was the first question, was the survey in air, the first one. There's no way to determine it wasn't. Lee County accepted it. They were the authority at the time it was built. It was built in accordance with the drawing, and we can confirm that by the landword lines. All meet the requirements of that, match that original survey. So, you know, based on that, based on some old aerials, it appears that it's been slowly changing over the past 20-odd years.
So, so the lot corners are now out in the water?
That's what was indicated on the survey. The iron pin can't be found.
So that's, the answer to that question is no and yes. Okay? And, and the reason is, is that a legal description was to describe the property. But these are navigable waters that are lands of the state. Your property ends at the mean-high water line. Okay? So your property line on, in this situation, changes. And anybody who's owned waterfront in this situation knows your property line, you know, comes and goes, just like the tide. And so the parameters is mean-high water. And, and that's the parameter. The other thing that may have very well happened, because they're not clear about it on the 1999 survey, is that in 88, 88 datum, which wasn't really enacted until 96, became the 88 datum. And there's a foot difference in elevation, and if I move a foot up, it moves over. It could be that that is some of this also. But it was legally permitted. It was legally built. And now it doesn't meet the requirements due to no action by the applicant or any government entity, therefore become legally nonconforming.
If I were to buy this piece of property and decide to increase the size by extending it out to where the 25-foot setback requirements are, haven't I, I've increased the size of my lot? Have I not increased the value of it?
If, if it were possible to do that, yes. I mean.
But it is possible.
Well, no, I, let me, let me, I'm going to, I'm going to back up Mr. Sweet on this one, so, and you may have a piece, you may have a plat from the 1930s or some piece of title that indicates that you have, your property extends into the natural body of your waterway. And so there's only a handful of opportunities where that could actually happen. You have a recognized Spanish or British land grant, a US land grant from the Swamp and Overflow Acts prior to statehood. Or you have something what was created under what's known as the Bulkhead and Butler Acts, which would have allowed, so, so someone had gone out and specifically approved, so there's only, prior to statehood, and then afterwards, all navigable bodies became the property of the government. And so unless you can show that there was a land grant to you, or you held title prior to statehood, you, you do not have a right to build out beyond that, that moving high, mean-high, high-water line. And so what Jay's indicated is that through a variety of factors, there may have been actual erosion, or there may have not been actual erosion, simply the, the plat it or wherever it was deeded out was inaccurate to begin with. And then later on, when we got better data on the height, on the, that mean level, water level, it changed, and so it's actually down a foot. And so what was, what could be built, if, if we're thinking in a theoretical world, well, I can go in, I can get permits, and I can put a seawall out to my property line into the, into the bay. That is not a possibility unless you can show title going way back. And there are places where that, that occurs. I seriously doubt this is one of them.
And to that end, while we do not do a title search, I'm fairly aware of most areas within the bay that have what we call a trustees deed. It's Trusted Internal Improvement Fund. It's a deed that came from the governor and cabinet to the submerged lands. This is not one of the areas. There's only two or three areas out there that have those deeds. And they're actually identifiable on the property appraiser's website. So that being the case, as my daddy used to say, the chances of rebuilding this is slim and none, as slim as left town. So I, I don't think there's any real possibility of that.
If, if the owner decided to put an addition on the house, say he's going to put a master bedroom suite or something on it, and he has to set back from somewhere, does he set back from a hypothetical 25-foot line, or does he use the new existing line that is 16 feet?
The way that we have proposed the condition is that he would have to set back from the 25-foot line for any improvements. So all we're doing is saying we recognize that this house is legally nonconforming. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a big house on that piece of property. The property has shrunk. Unless you start doing a lot of craziness, I don't see anything where they're going to be doing any quote additions. On the other hand, they may want to do a complete remodel on the inside, and they may not, they want to make sure that they can do that. That's a valid reason to, to ask for this, so they can come in and, you know, the house is 20 years old. A lot of people at 20 years would like to modernize the inside of the house.
If I may go to those conditions. So staff does recommend approval, and if it were to be granted, we recommend the approval conditions that it's limited to this lot and this specific structure and to the least amount necessary, so 8.54-feet reduction along the eastern portion and 4.2 feet along the southern portion. And it would apply to this structure only, so they cannot bulldoze it and rebuild it to those same setbacks that we're allowing here, and any additional structures would be meeting those 25-foot setbacks.
And, and that recommendation would help the homeowner with their problem, then?
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Ma'am, I don't see where it says in there that the, the new owner would have to comply with the 25-foot setback.
This is a condition, oh, I'm sorry, the last part, "Any additional structure shall be constructed in accordance with 4-1893," which requires 25 feet.
From where, from what?
From the mean-high water line.
As it exists at the time that it's surveyed, or from, from which line? The new one or the old one?
The one that's provided on the survey to us when they come in for permitting. So that would be the mean-high water line based on the DEP survey that they obtained.
That is basically the new one that's presented now.
Yes.
So they would have to take off that much of the house that they've requested?
If they were requesting an addition, they would need to be set back further than where they currently are, yes.
Thank you.
There appears to be only one area that they conceivably have any kind of addition now, because they're obviously getting variances on all this sort of thing. So it strikes me that if this is mainly to allow them to do renovation on the inside, that that wouldn't affect, it wouldn't matter which line you were doing, but if you were going to actually try to do anything over here, I would think you would have to have the current mean-high line be what would apply for any addition, right?
Yes, but that's a, it's a brawling like 18-year average or something like that.
This is a so much better rendition of what they wanted to do. Please provide this sort of thing in our packet. I couldn't begin to understand. You kept turning the property upside down, so on one way, north was this way, and the next time, north was this way. If you want us to be able to be well-versed on this, this is what we need.
I apologize. It was my first time. I definitely. I apologize, it was my first time, I definitely learned.
Okay, well, I'm giving you a hint for the future then.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
If we were to grant this exception, do we not set a precedent for all of the other landowners along the bay going forward? And that, does that not create an additional problem, not only for the future, for all the property owners, for the real estate community and certainly for the city?
So I think for certain you would create a political precedent. Whether you would create a legal precedent, I would defer to council on.
This is, and I disagree with a lot of city attorneys on this point, that there is a, there is a general presumption that each piece of property is unique, each application is unique and, and to that extent, no granting of any zoning level approval can ever constitute a variance. Now, the actual case law on that is if you have fairly exact circumstances or fairly exact, you may even have the same property owners with the exact same circumstances, then there's a significant interest in public policy that the decisions made by a local government, you know, line up. And so that everyone has an understanding of what the rules are. With respect to this particular issue, I doubt that this will create a legal precedent other than to state that when we are dealing with situations where things are caused by natural events like erosion, that that would constitute a hardship. And I don't think that that is particularly earth-shattering revelation. So no, I'm not particularly concerned about the presidential value of this. Ultimately, what ends up happening in these situations, if this becomes a reoccurring issue where there are multiple properties along Estera Bay that have this, then the city is, is more properly served by coming up with specific regulations to deal with this reoccurring issue than it is to address every single property owner through a variance.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
Please.
Would it be possible to have the applicant come back with a, a better plan for the riprap? Or better yet, to have a plan approved by whoever has to approve it, which is DEP and whoever else wants to get involved, to have the placement of that proposed protection riprap that they're going to add be permitted and a copy of that permit be on hand?
Well...
Before, before, it's a, or a condition, it would be a condition.
As a matter of state law, where we are not permitted to condition our approvals based on, on other state reviewing agencies.
Okay.
But as I indicated earlier, I think it would be appropriate to place a condition on that indicate that the applicant will pursue additional armoring opportunities, including the placement of additional riprap to the extent permissible to avoid further erosion. I think that's completely permissible.
And aren't they, they're suggesting that, right?
Yeah, I think it's in their best interest to do that anyway. But we, to avoid the issue that this comes back, I feel that that's an appropriate condition.
Is that something that prior to giving building permits to allow them to do the modifications that they have in mind, that there be some plan for the riprap be there? I mean, would that be, would that be a question you could ask when they came to ask for a building permit?
I'm not even sure that even if they, they did interior remodel renovations, that the fact that they're nonconforming for setbacks would prevent them from pulling that. Because I don't, I don't know that there's a nexus between those two issues.
It would really just be for expansion because it would be expanding and nonconforming.
What does that mean?
Sorry, Mary, you were giving an answer.
If it was done solely an interior remodel where they're not increasing the footprint of any sort, it wouldn't be going through zoning review because it's entirely within the footprint.
Okay, so.
Are there any further questions or comments from the zoning board? Does the applicant or the community development want to say anything further?
I don't think we have anything, I don't know, I don't think there's any public comment.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion. I think staff's done a fantastic job. They did their homework, they did their homework very diligently. And everything that's been brought up, I can't go along with everything, but majority of it I will.
Is that your motion?
I think would should be approved, okay? With the recommendations, as simple as that.
And with the condition?
With the conditions, right, exactly, I said.
And one of those conditions would be that they, to the extent permitted by law, that they seek to improve the situation with riprap or whatever else is permitted. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, call the roll.
James Worster?
No.
Robert Inserpey?
Yes.
Barbara Craig?
Yes.
Russ Nguyen?
Yes.
Chairman Kurlender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
No.
Roger Brunswick?
No.
So by a vote of four to three, the motion is approved. So this, before we go any further, this is the first time we've had this kind of deep division in a, in a decision. Which leads me to the conclusion that we should present both sides of the zoning board's point of view in depth to the city council. In doing that, I want to make sure that we have what the proponents of the vote, the yes people, think should be included to city council. As well as I want to understand why the three of you voted no. So that we could present a fair and balanced presentation to the city. So with that, obviously, the staff recommendations would, the four of us believe that, that... And, I mean, I, at its core, I believe it's fundamentally unfair to deny this. I mean, I just, I don't know if that's a sufficient reason.
My concern was why it was needed, and I don't think in the end that I'm totally persuaded that it's absolutely needed for what they claim they wish to do, which is just remodel. But they do have a right to, if they can, within the zoning rules, if they wanted to put an extension. And this was the most helpful thing for me, there's not really much room for them to do much. The only possible place they could do anything is right here, right here.
Well, I thought the remodeling was only on the interior remodeling.
That is, and the remodeling, at least according to what we were told, this isn't necessary to do remodeling.
No.
But I don't, it is a hardship if they have a legal right to have this change. I'm not about to stand in the way with it. It doesn't do much good for them. If they want to bulldoze the house, they're not gonna be able to, they're gonna have to make the footprint of the house smaller.
Correct.
Not larger. So that doesn't seem to be a hidden agenda that I might not have been aware of. And, you know, I don't think that this does much good for them in the long run because my sense is erosion goes on. I don't think we have much hope of that changing. And I would not be in favor of coming back again and continually giving setbacks to the point where the mean high water line is on the boundary of the house and we keep saying that's not a nonconforming lot. But this seems to be a reasonable step. And I, I couldn't find any compelling reason to vote against it, so that's my position.
Mr. Inserpey, you want to add anything to that?
Well, I say in my case, I think the work that's been done on this case, black and white, you know, everybody's concerned with the erosion, with the erosion, with the erosion, yet everywhere throughout the country, they keep filling in, filling, making more property. So six of one, half dozen in the other. Why should these people be chastised for that?
Russ, anything you want to add?
No, I agree with our decision, you know, in approval. I put myself in their shoes and I know they're trying to do the right thing. And because of the hardships, you know, that's happening here, you know, I'm in total agreement also with what the staff's trying to do. So.
Mr. Donnelly, you wish to come?
We talk about hardship, I don't think they have to show hardship in a special exception situation.
It's a variance.
It's a variance, though.
But it says here, special exception.
The second case was a special exception?
Second case, the COP.
Seems to me they can go ahead and put riprap on their lot now without our blessing.
Agreed, that's not, that's not what they're requesting.
So, I mean, I don't see a need to change, you know, setback requirements. I don't see the particular issue here that affects them. I mean, I think they...
So your vote, if I understand it, to try to, is that the law does not require them to be here. And they have a legal nonconforming use, they don't have to be here. And therefore, I vote no because of the process that's being used. So it's not on the merits, it's on the, it's not on the substance is what I want to say, but it's on the procedure here. They don't belong here.
Yeah, it's not necessary.
Right. Mr. Brunswick?
My feeling is that they could get a very, approval from the DEP to trim back the mangroves or otherwise possibly even remove mangroves. They could get that exception. They could add more land, bring in more fill, and then add riprap to bring it up to the conforming size of the, the original survey. That's my feeling, that if they, that they can make a strong enough case to do that. And that's for that reason I voted no.
Mr. Worster?
Basically the same as Mr. Brunswick's opinion. I think we're just pushing the nonconforming problem down the road for the next guy. Someday, that's house is gonna sell or have new owners that are gonna have the same problem, it's probably worse, erosion's not gonna correct itself. And doing, doing nothing that's definitive to protect what's there minimally was not presented, therefore I voted no.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask something. Wouldn't you rather try to save what you have instead of letting it fall by the wayside, erode? Wouldn't you want to save what you've got? People invest their money, their time, their effort in it and to turn around and just say, well, we're not gonna grant this variance because of this and that. No. You want the people to save their property, you don't want to take that property away from them. And if they can come across with something that'll save that property, I'm all for it. Why would you want to take that right away from them? And that's what you're doing by saying no. You're saying, you're saying to them, it's your property and it's being eroded? Tough cookies, live with it. No, that's not the answer.
May I respond?
Yes.
You know, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but you know, moving forward 10, 20 years down the road, and I hope that these folks enjoy their, their home for that long at least, with the rising sea levels that we know are coming, this is just gonna create a bigger problem moving forward. So for that reason, and the reason I voted no, I think you can make an argument with the Department of Environmental Protection to remove those mangroves, expand, bring that property back out to the original survey line. And at that point in time, you, you forego, or you, you, what's the word? I'm trying, you, well, you restore it, but then you also prolong, or the inevitable, I suppose, but it gives them another 20 years or so before you need to readdress this issue again.
I understand your point, Roger, I really do. But the fact remains, you know, it's in front of us now. It's not in front of us in 20 years from now, it's in front of us now. Do we have the right to say to these people, no, no, you can't do it, you're being penalized? It's not their fault, it's nature, okay?
Mr. Inserpey, I hear you. I, I, I don't, I hear exactly what you're saying, but I think we do have the right to protect our, our land and that's part of our job to protect, to protect these people from the inevitable.
Well, aren't we protecting their land? We're protecting land by granting them the variance because they're gonna do, they're gonna do something to enhance that property.
I think it's a temporary protection.
So, okay, the points, the points, I think you've, you've both made your points identically. One interesting question is, to me, given my background, is why did you close on the property? Without, without doing something about this? If it were me, I'd be asking my real estate agent and my lawyer, hey, how did this happen? Sorry about that, but...
Forgive me, this is the first one I've attended, so I don't know if I was to come up and answer better.
You're not entitled, but that's all right, we'll hear you. I'm just interested in...
They wanted a place to use. Their current home had already sold, they wanted a place for season. Our sellers wanted to sell, they had already identified another home. The buyers were cashed, so they didn't have to worry about this being an issue for their mortgage. It was gonna work out for both of them and they decided boldly to work through the variance together so that in the future, if they wanted to sell, they wouldn't have to go through this.
But after they closed?
Yes.
I have a little less sympathy for them than I did before. That doesn't change anything.
If I, actually, if I might comment on, on that particular point, you know, it is, it is very common and we get requests often to deal with issues of grant, the granting of variances with respect to pre-closing and post-closing issues as a result of a number of concerns. And I'm thinking just off the top of my head for others' water issues. Many communities that are, that have non-natural water bodies, but canal-based ones, the old General Development Corporation, things like that, they'll find out when they do the surveys, oh, the seawall and the canals are not where they're supposed to be. Based on the, and every single house on that block is, is outside the setbacks or the, or the canal's in the wrong place or the road is in the wrong place. And all these situations come up on a regular basis and people, they look at it and they say, okay, I didn't cause this issue. It's, you know, the standard practice is, we still want to close, we're gonna pursue the variance, the seller will pay for part of the variance application fees and they go through. So, you know, anyone looking at our, the five criteria that we review for a variance application would probably see this property, it's not self-created, you know, certainly it's unique circumstances that apply to the property. They would go through the criteria, think it, they wouldn't necessarily come here and expect that they're gonna get into a huge discussion about, you know, whether they own tidal out into the water and whether it's gonna be seawalls built. So it doesn't shock me that people would close on property because it's a fairly common occurrence for a variety of reasons, including reasons that have to do with setbacks from water. But, you know, when you go through that process, it's a public hearing process, you never know what the result is gonna be. So I would, I would encourage them to, to, before they get to city council, to discuss this with someone in the environmental field and see what they can, what assurances they can give on that issue.
With all due respect to council, I, I hear what you're saying, but the fact that the title company had the exception on the coverage, that would wave a red flag to me.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, and, and I'd say, well, wait a minute, something's, before we go forward and close, and Ms. Miller, I'm also a realtor, so I feel your pain and I feel the...
and close, and Ms. Miller, I'm also a realtor, so I feel your pain, and I feel the sellers or the buyers' issue, but that would, that would tell me, hey, we, we need to get this cleared up before we close. And I would recommend, somebody would have said that to them.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I voted no also.
And wouldn't, and whoever did that, I think that they would be before us here eventually. I mean, we will be entertaining-
Yeah.
The same conversation.
We would have had the same conversation earlier.
Early.
Is there anything else? So the, the second case has been adjourned for 30 days, and is there anything else to come before the zoning board today? Are there any questions or comments from any members of the board? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I would just like to make one comment. I think this has been an excellent discussion, Mr. Chairman, for us to understand each individual's reasons on why or why not.
Yep. Is there a motion to adjourn?
When are we scheduled for our next meeting?
Do we have a-
At least 30 days.
Do we have another case coming up soon?
Next month.
Is a-
Well, we're going to have the continuance next month.
Right.
We're going to have the continuance.
We've got to deal with that one.
Okay.
I will not be here on the 14th.
I don't think I will either. I'm not here either on the-
We need to consider a change of date then.
Change of date or?
Oh, wait, wait a second.
We're talking about-
I checked, no, I think that I am.
This is May we're talking about.
Yeah, no, May, I have, I'm out of town most of May for-
You're what, the 21st?
Three college graduations, but.
I could do the 7th or the 21st.
Yeah, I'm here. And then I leave the next day for-
What is it, the 21st of May?
Yeah.
Is it the 21st?
No, I, I have it down as the 14th.
The 21st is what I have.
May 14th.
Unless it's changed.
What?
May 14th.
Yeah, 14th.
Oh, it is, okay.
So I will not be here for that, sorry. I have it down, it's the 21st.
Where is it, the 14th?
Okay.
It should be the 21st, it should be the 13th.
Some of us have the 14th.
There may have been a modification to the date sent out.
Third Tuesday would be the 14th.
Help us, John.
Help, help.
Good morning. Your normal meeting time would have been the 21st. However, if you remember, we had a discussion, I don't remember if it was a verbal discussion or an email discussion on future dates, and there were concerns about everything from graduations to vacations.
Right, right.
And so that's why we looked at a net earlier date.
We moved it.
Correct.
That's right.
So the 14th, the 14th is the correct date. The normal date would have been-
The 21st.
The 21st.
You should sit up here so you can say it, the soles on your shoes.
It's, it's more dramatic.
He likes to gossip.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion, Mr. Brunswick.
Hearing no opposition, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.